Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tracy Council Special Budget Study Session for April the 20th, 2017. We call this meeting to order and welcome Ms. Stewart. You can take your role, please.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Ibrahim.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Mayor Protan Porterick.
Here.
Councilmember McCowen. Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
I did receive a call from Councilman McCowen that he's attempting to get to the airport and back, and there's a good chance that he's not going to make it here this evening. So we'll wait for that and do his excusing at the next council meeting before we have to. We have one discussion item this evening. See, one is a proposed fiscal year 2017-18 annual budget and three-year budget. This is our second night meeting in the study session, so I'm turning this meeting over to the City Manager, Kishnik.
Thank you. So tonight, we have two issues: water, sewer, and then the combined rate. And then the two leftover issues we had, which was the Niles Barterhouse and the funding for a study for the Trails and Pathways. So before I turn it over to Tom, I wanted to say, this afternoon, I received a text from Wade Fleby, County Commissioner, asking if the city had submitted an application for their additional funding that the county has done for roads. And we had not, and Wade is the chair of that committee. So within an hour and a half, Phil Hootery was able to get a $208,000 appropriation thanks to Wade and his quick work for the city. He does want 10%, but since he's here and since Wade did that and it happened within a matter of hours, that money will go towards Elmwood. Do you remember Elmwood, the pictures on it? So I wanted to leave with that, that within the last budget meeting till now, we're already seeing funding come in.
Did Claussen also apply?
We don't know.
We don't have any funding from Elmwood.
Yeah, we don't know.
Just curious.
Yeah, but we'll take it.
Well, it's in Wade's area, so you'd hopefully call him.
Yeah, I saw the emails that were going back and forth. It was pretty impressive how quickly Bill got that put together. He pays to have connections and know people and have experience with people. And I know Bill has experience with the county road commission up there, so I'm sure that helped.
Yeah. And last year, we were recipients. So anyway, that was sort of, yeah, that was the good news of the day and the quick work of a few people. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom Darling, and he wants to talk about water and sewer rates and the impact on the financials.
Great, Tom. Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Let's see which one works. We're going to go ahead and I'm going to turn it over then to Paul Trasper to kind of give us a lead in then on water and sewer.
Before Tom starts with his presentation, I just thought I'd lay a little groundwork out about water rates and how we come to the water rates that we do come to. And one of the things that I think everyone needs to understand is water usage is weather-related. I mean, bottom line, new building, new construction is great, but when it comes to the volumes that we use and purchase, it's really insignificant compared to the usage that is exactly right here. When people start irrigating and needing water because it's hot and dry. If it's a cold, wet summer, water usage will drop dramatically. And we get our water from Great Lakes Water Authority, and the wholesale rates start there, and then it carries on through us, both sewer and water. And once they set their rates to us, then we have to look at everything that they ask of us, and then we have to determine what we need to continue on with our operation and maintenance and our capital improvement.
So this leads into this slide here. There's a lot of ad on it, but really, we can kind of concentrate if we can on the shaded area. The first row is the revenue requirements. This is kind of built on the same model we did last year as part of our exercise. We came up, where are revenue requirements and how do we meet those costs? Well, it's by our sales, right? And the sales are directed by the volume times the rate. So the question is, what do we have to charge to meet this revenue requirement of about 18.5 million that we're proposing in 2018? As Paul pointed out, revenue requirements are really primarily dictated by what the Great Lakes Water Authority is charging us. And you can see from 2015 to 2016, it went up by about 18% because they switched the formula from a variable and fix to primarily fixed. So that's why you see the big increase. So with that being said, the first thing is estimating the volume. We're going to use, or at least we're proposing to use, an estimated value around 470,000 MCF. And if you look, you know, through the history there, that seems to be a very reasonable assumption to use as far as sales volume. You see, we've come down for several years. 2017, because we had a dry summer, we think, you know, we're actually going to bring about $500,000 of working capital. So at the end of the day, to meet, you know, our revenue requirements, it's volume times the rate, and then how does that affect our working capital? Because honestly, that's really what we want to maintain. One of the reasons we have one of the lowest water rates and sewer rates in the area is because we don't carry debt, right? When we have major capital improvements, we try and have enough available working capital to address those. So again, for 2018, then, the cost of revenue requirements went up about 6% or, excuse me, around 3% based on the Great Lakes Water Authority. We're proposing a rate increase of around 2.1%, so it doesn't quite cover it all. And the fact that we think that it's going to have on our working capital is a decrease around $95,000, as opposed to if we did nothing, right, and they no change, it would be about 471,000. Okay? So that's what we're proposing for water. Next, sewer is the same thing. The revenue requirement is around $14.5 million. Again, estimating the sales volume around 470,000, and we're proposing a rate of 26.6%, which is, again, the revenue requirement went up by 10%. We're proposing a 5.1% increase in the sewer rate. With that being said, it looks like, you know, even our proposal, we're going to decrease working capital by about $2 million. With that said, why can't I do this? It's because I think in '17, we're going to increase by about 1.1 million. So again, we're trying to keep, you know, over time, that level of working capital, at least try and level that out from what we've experienced in prior years. So let's talk about it, you know, in a combined thing. When a resident gets their water bill, they get a combined rate because what the volume of water is also the charge for the sewer, right? So let's look at what we've done over the year, and again, let's look at, concentrate on the combined rate and the average residential bill. Again, the combined rate, if we put it all together, our cost was up there, but was a 6% increase from GLEWA in the Oakland County Water Resource Commission for sewage. We're proposing a 3.3% combined increase, so from $63.80 to $65.90 is a $3.3 increase. So if you look at the average residential bill for a quarterly payment, right, their quarterly residential water payment, about 3.9 MCF, is going to be from, going from about $2.48 to $2.57, or an increase of only about $8 per quarter, $8.19. That's what we're proposing. That's the first question.
Question. So the working capital for water funds, roughly 13 million. Working capital for the sewer fund is about 27 million, thereabouts. How is that determined to be, I'll say, the right number to keep as working capital? Why is it not, you know, 30 million or 22 million?
Sure, sure. Well, there's a lot of, right, there's a lot of things that can go into it. The first thing is, what is the right level, right? Now, it has a lot to do with what kind of capital projects do you see coming in the future, A, and B, what's it take to run a utility system? Keep in mind that I'm paying for the water every month, but I'm only billing every quarter, right? So there's at least four or five months that I bought water before I even, you know, get the revenues back for it. So what is, you know, the right level? Certainly, we have some major sewer projects that are coming up. Let's talk about the sewer one, right, because that's about 26 million, right? And that we've been decreasing over the last few years, again, because they haven't been quite covering the cost, right, that we're getting from the Oakland County Water Resource Authority. But we have some major ones, some major ones we did, if you see in '16, right, we decreased working capital about $4.2 million. And we have some that are coming up for Evergreen Farmington, if you want to speak on that.
Yeah, and like in '16, we handled that Evergreen Farmington, that underground storage capacity that was needed, mandated, basically. One of the things that we feel is coming up is with all the development that is being proposed along Big Beaver, is it's starting to be realized that sewer capacity along this corridor may not be adequate to handle all this new development, and it may have to be upgraded. And it's going to be a very expensive endeavor to deal with.
And one thing I would note about that, that is independent of the town center even being developed?
Absolutely.
Along with my understanding is the Great Lakes, excuse me, George Coon Drain, right, is, if you want to speak on that.
Yeah, and there are some federal mandates that are coming down, not only here in the metro Detroit area, but across the country as far as storing or keeping sanitary sewer overflows during storm or wet weather. And it's a billion-dollar issue, even here in this area. And they're trying to do as much as they can with the capital they have and kind of stretch it out as far as they can by using the money in the ways that can increase their capacity to handle big storms. And it's going to cost, and it's going to cost everyone, and it's unfortunate, but it's a necessity.
So I'm not sure if we answered your question, but again, we've, you know, in the sewer fund, we had about $24.8 million in 2013, right? And we're trying to maintain that for these expected capital purchases out there. So what's, you know, what's the right answer? Well, what do we want to do to keep from going into debt, right, for some major sewer project? So I'm just trying to, at this point, keep it level. And with the water fund, I'm trying to stop, stop the bleeding, right? We went from 20 million down to 13 million. Good question.
It is a good question. And I think if you look at it historically, you know, it kind of explains what you've tried to do over the years. Historically, is to maintain a certain working capital. And I think that has more to do with it, isn't it, that it's, you found a level that you feel comfortable with, and you want to kind of maintain that, and it's been that way for a long time.
Well, frankly, look at what's happening in McCollum County. You don't want to be caught unprepared.
Correct. It's just like, it's like an insurance policy.
Any questions? Mayor Protan Porterick?
So the water main break that we experienced over by Triboma, how did that help me remember how that impacted our?
That actually didn't impact us directly as far as any kind of revenue. It was a Great Lakes Water Authority water main. Now, they had to somehow absorb the cost of this repair through their capital funding and their revenue, working capital. And that's where it all took place. Now, are all the communities absorbing some of that cost? I'm sure they are. They have plans for a lot of improvements. I've been in a lot of meetings lately, and there's some really good thought going on as far as really making the whole water transmission system far reliable than, you know, not saying that DWSD didn't do anything with it, but I believe that Great Lakes Water Authority has really taken it to the next level to increase their awareness of maintenance and operations. And that was just happened to be something they had to take care of.
On the rate, you know, we had 2013, actual $30 and some change, and then the 20, let's go to 2017, at $38.50, is that, that's not strictly a function of just what GLEWA charges us, right? That is all, that's a combination of that and the volume, right?
Yeah. If you look at revenue requirements, our part of it is pretty minimal compared to primarily the GLEWA stuff. In fact, for instance, if you want to look at 2016, right, 2015, it was $16 million, right, 2016 is $18 million, right, the revenue requirements. And that in 2016 is when the Great Lakes Water Authority flipped it. And so they went mostly fixed. There used to be like, I think, 40% fixed, 60% variable rate that they would charge us, right? They flipped it, went 60% fixed, so it doesn't matter how much we sell, right? We've got a certain dollar amount we got to do, and then the rest is based on volume, which equated to an 18% increase. And if you look at that, that was an 18% increase they gave us in one year. We increased our rates that year, you know, it was 11%. I mean, we had to. Again, we're kind of, you know, we have to have an answer to, reaction to what they've put on us, I guess.
So if we had an exceptionally dry 2018, for example, and the rates at $38.50 and the volume then spikes from 470 to something north, let's say, 490, right?
Right.
Then that working capital would change to a better or more positive number. Is that, does that ring the chart?
Absolutely. But that's why the volume estimate, you know, it's very important, right? So am I going, you know, looking at that, or am I over, or am I under? I can tell you it's wrong, right? I'm not going to comment on 470,000 MCF perfectly, right? That's why I try and give you a long-range perspective. And if you look at the rates, we're not proposing an increase in the rates in '19 or '20 because you can see, if you look at, hey, looks like I might be bringing down about $500,000 in '17 to working capital, right? And I'm going to be losing about 950,000, 95, excuse me, 95,000 in '18, but maybe make it up in '19, right? But then lose, you know, another 5, you know, again, it's a long-term perspective on maintaining the integrity, or at least the whole of the working capital.
So the rate, and I, just one last question. So the rate at $39.30 is not necessarily directly related to what GLEWA charges, although there's a factor in there, but it's got to do with the volume as well and our estimates and smoothing to try to get to the.
Right. I mean, it's two-part. Yes, it's part of GLEWA. It's definitely $18.5 million, right? And then based on, yeah, on our part, boy, how much do I think I'm going to sell in a normal year, right? I think, again, '17 was a little abnormal. It was a great year for water sewer sales and golf browns. So, you know, yes, and again, you know, '19 and '20 is not written in stone, right? If we have a banner year and I go up in working capital, then all that, in the railroad, all it does is defer, right, that the rate increases for future years. Hey, we got room to come back down to kind of maintain that level, steering a big ship.
Try to make it cost neutral.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Tom?
Thank you.
Mayor Council, when we came out of retreat, we had one strategy that was to reengage the community to identify a continuation plan for the Trail and Pathway Plans. And we talked a little bit about this last Monday night, and we want to come back with you a little bit further explanation of what that process is and also some options. And what this would include is a three-phase process where you would hire a firm that would utilize the NCI charrette system, and it's for problem-solving, decision-making, centered around a multiple-day charrette. Phase one is background data, identify where you're going to have the event, who you're going to meet with. Then the phase two is the meat of it. It's a multi-day charrette, which includes preparation of three different plans that build upon each other that can get presented. So what happens is, we bring in design professionals that are experts. They work with the community one day. At night, they do the design. They present it the next day. At night, they refine it, meet with the community again, and then refine it again and have a plan. Then the last phase is just to refine it and then present it to the community. So then we want to talk a little bit about what our options are. And if we don't want to spend $220,000 to do another plan, then obviously, that's the first option shown there, too, is to construct pathway in the major road rights away. We could wait and evaluate the response of the pathway under construction to remind everybody, the pathway under construction is from the Dog Park and on easements from Zion Christian Church, Walsh College, and on the Water Resource Commission's property up to Waddles Road. Or we could, you know, connect neighborhood nodes on an increment basis in a way, say, this is identifying your assets and then sort of strategically putting segments in. And I think we're doing that now, actually, with that, from City Hall, Dog Park, and then up to Waddles Road. And then you could connect that then to the historic village. Another example would be from City Hall along Big Beaver to Crooks Road, and then you could go up north to Bowlin Park, and that would be a connection. And just think about that, there's literally hundreds of connections that you can make, and you could do it more on an incremental basis. That's what we're presenting.
So before we move on, the pathway under construction, is that going to be completed this year?
It'll be significantly completed by this fall. And why I answer that vaguely is because it depends on some MBEQ permitting, so that's sometimes difficult to predict. And when that permitting will be concluded, and you know, next.
Any other questions on the slides? Councilman Baker?
I'm not sure it's a question. I mean, I guess it is. Well, no. Are you looking strictly for questions right now? I mean, I can put a question mark at the end.
Change your station.
There'll be a question.
I think staff's finished?
That's right.
Okay. So we'll open it up to discussion.
I'll end up asking questions. No, I, you know, it's interesting, so I, Mark first talked about this with me at our retreat, the charrette system, and it was actually my group's pit project that we presented and how it became the strategy. I think conceptually, it's a very neat idea, and, you know, I certainly have been involved in the Trails and Pathways issue for the past couple of years in my neighborhood. And I, but I got to thinking after Monday night and something the mayor said about, you know, whether we're committed to doing this, these projects at all, and what our thoughts are. And, you know, I have this stack of these here, which is kind of funny, but, you know, we do have a Trails and Pathway master plan that was completed in 2009 that is very comprehensive. And I'm sure it's eight years old now, or seven and a half years old, but it, I think there are a lot of good working parts to this that might solve a lot of these concerns we may have. I, please, no, here, my, my, please, take one class that I don't feel like, but, but, so I tell my class I've had about this. I don't know that we need to spend another $220,000 to have this process, even though I think the process itself is a really cool idea, and it's very actively engaging with the community. But I think we know at this point what the community does or doesn't like about trails and pathways. I think it's certain to say, nobody wants a trail that goes right next to their house between two houses. They don't want certain things that feel too invasive. I mean, those are the big complaints that I've always heard. And I worry that we've already got a segment started, the Dog Park segment, and it's a substantial amount of money. And if we were to do something like this, it puts us off from doing anything further for a couple of years, really, as I see it. I mean, by the time we're budgeting for the following year, then the work is the next year. And I, going back to what we already have, I think that there's ideas in here that we could start to implement and look at. And I'd rather see, if we're going to spend this money, I'd rather see us allocating money towards another segment. I said when we approved the money for the existing segment that, you know, the thing that concerned me was we don't have an overall plan, and I don't think we should just be spending all of this money and then not knowing what we're doing in the future. But I think it's time for this council to reengage with the plan that was completed here and decide, like the mayor said, if we are committed to it and want to do it. And on that note, on a soapbox, but it.
We think of.
If we're not, if we are going to do it, I think that now's the time to be allocating the funds to do it when the economy is moving, because not now, when? I mean, if we wait a few more years or give it to somebody else, the economy's going to go, it could go badly again, and then we've wasted all this time. And so I'm inclined to say, let's not do the charrette. Let's work with what we have, knowing the concerns that we have, and try to find a way to do a continuation segment. I mean, I'll say, things I like about this, you know, there's a segment that runs along I-75 through a lot of beautiful area that gets you up and down the city, and we could start going off spokes from there at some point into the parks. I mean, that's just a concept that I think is interesting, and I, you know, it might be a less intrusive start in many ways. I know there's law logistics to that, so I don't say that lightly, but, you know, I think there are plenty of ideas. I think that we're going to hear from the community, good and bad, regardless. But, that's one of those, I don't think, I, several of us, I mean, I think that at times, I've heard support or not support for the Trails and Pathways on this council, and I do think that there is support for it in some regard. And again, now's the time, we should be doing it if we're going to do it, especially since we've already constructed our process, in process of constructing a major segment. So just some additional thoughts.
Yeah, I think what I said Monday night was that, you know, how many times do we have to do a plan and how many times, you know, if you look behind us from 1970 to 2009, 2009, we've done that, there is a plan, there's always been a plan. So I didn't see any need to do that again and spend $220,000. I'd rather see that money put towards implementing the plan that's already been here. And so that was my point. And I agree, Ethan, that I think we got to decide, do we want to do this or not, first of all, before we even discuss how to do it or whatever. So, Councilman Baker?
Well, I don't think it's a question of if we're going to do it. I mean, we're doing it. I mean, we're in the process of doing it. We can't stop on something now, and so you just continue to move forward. You skip one, and you move to two, three, and four, and just, you know, like you said, if the economy's good, you got to put as much money as you can to it each year to make the best you can. And the city, you know, let's be frank, the city's almost built out, so you're not, like Dave's point was, we don't have major areas like railroad tracks that we can construct new areas. So you're just going to have to put up that Cheryl Lane, or whatever they call that, with the bicycle to connect them, and that'll be fine. But we just have to move forward. It's not a question of if, it's just continue to move forward.
I guess that's the, does everyone feel that way? Because I'd like to just, maybe just draw your attention to what I, there's a lot of reading in here, and I think, quite honestly, if we paid somebody $220,000 to come in and do this plan, I think about 90% of what we would get is already in here. And I think really, all I need to do is really just be tweaked a little bit. But I, if you look, it's kind of upside down, but this page here that's got the. Is there a number on it?
Oh, here it is. It's 14.
I had just a kind of a brief discussion with staff today. You know, I think if we take, you know, take this with you tonight and take a look at it, but maybe pay attention, we keep talking about nodes, and we keep talking about connecting nodes, and I think that's exactly what Troy is today. It's kind of made up of nodes. And, you know, if you put those nodes in the city, it just seems like that's what we want to try and connect to. We want to connect neighborhood nodes. We want to connect neighborhood nodes, and we want to try to bring and let our residents move about the city safely. And so I think if we all agree that this is where we should go, and maybe we shouldn't spend $220,000 on a new plan, then I think we should find a number that we feel comfortable with, you know, dedicating to trails and pathways for this budget and the next two budgets, cycles. And then let staff go back and take the concept of connecting the nodes. You know, we have, we have a great start, and I thought at our last, one of our council study sessions, when we were talking about trails and pathways, when we decided not to do, we got turned down for the grant, that we were coming back to the park and Civic Center, and we were going to spoke off from there. And that's why we dedicated the money to the, to the trail over here. And I think that was a great start. And now I think what we need to do is kind of let staff know what we're looking for. Are we looking to connect nodes? Are we looking to connect parks, which I always saw was a great idea? And find ways to let our residents move safely around the city, and maybe get them down to Big Beaver Corridor to be able to use the corridor. So I really think it's kind of simple for us tonight, decide how much money we think each year for the next three years that can continue this, this project that we all think is important. And then let staff kind of come back to us with like a three-year plan of how we connect some of these important nodes, and maybe we can discuss a little bit about what we think those are. And, but before we do that, I really, you know, we got a, we got a great start going up to Waddles, and I understand it's going to come under budget. I would really like to see, nobody say it's a trail that goes to nowhere.
I think I started with that. I think I've probably seen some of that tonight.
I'm not, you know, I think we can make, I think we can make it go somewhere very simply with maybe the extra money that we have. I think it would be a great opportunity to take the trail to the Historical Museum. You know, just a short turn left on Waddles West, go across the Livery Lane, and go right to the front door of the Historical Museum, and then people can use that path to go safely from Civic Center, or from the Dog Park, or the regular park, to the museum or back. And I thought, I think it would be a great connection to start, and nobody could say it's a path that goes nowhere then. So I just think, talked to staff a little bit, and they thought that that could be accomplished within the budget that we already have, because we are coming under budget a little bit. So, you know, those are just some of the comments that, you know, I brought my little dog and pony packet that I, that Kurt and I have taken to promote trails and pathways to Zion Church, to Walsh College. And, you know, there's, just the most important thing, I think, is that when we do all the surveys, only nineteen, nine, only 9% of the respondents believe that developing a pathways and trail system is not important. 9%. So, you know, I think that's very significant, and there's other statistics in here, and there's, we have a lot of, a lot of stuff in here that we use to try and promote this path behind the church and the college. So I'm really happy to hear that there's consensus that we should just move forward, and I think now we just got to decide what's a good number to, that the city can feel comfortable putting towards this project, so that we can do some significant progress in maybe the next three years. So, I know we talked about a number, Brian, but do you have any suggestions?
Yeah, we'd be comfortable with 750,000 a year for three years out of the capital fund, and so question becomes, why, where does that number come from, right? And I'm just, or me here, just basing it off of what this first phase of the project costs. And it's just a budget number, you know, we still have to go out and get the actual cost, but from a budgeting perspective, 500 doesn't seem like enough, and a million seems like a lot. So that's where we come up to 750, compare it to where we are with the first segment, seems to be the right approach, right number.
Does council feel comfortable with taking the path to his sort of museum? Is he supposed to end it right at Waddles?
Yeah. I'm perfectly comfortable with that. I think it makes sense, completely logical. I'm starting to think, you know, year two, year three, where do we want to allocate funds? And it seems like if you're not anywhere near Big Beaver, you're not included in any plan. So I'm trying to, you know, think of places that aren't necessarily off of Big Beaver or close to the Civic Center that could still benefit from the trails and pathways. And I don't know how feasible that is, but, you know, if someone lives in the northwest quadrant or northeast quadrant, you know, they're, they're going to have to travel by car to get to the path, which defeats the purpose of the path. So when we, when you talk about how much per year, well, it depends on where you're putting it, of course. Some places are more, won't be, have as many wetlands as you're dealing with right now, and so it would be easier and less costly. Maybe you could make it a larger path. So that's what I'm trying to think through is, what can we do for year two and three? Because I think for year one, it's very clear that let's, let's move it closer to the Historic Village. So I don't know if staff had any thoughts about beyond that, where, what might make sense, as to continue along that path, or maybe start in another part of the city.
That's what we look at when the mayor says, what plan? And like, you made a good point, you know, there's taking it to Bowlin Park, how do you, how do you get to Bowlin Park, right? Because that's where, they've got a trail system through there. And, you know, even though we're doing a trail and pathway, there's a lot of biking that goes through those neighborhoods, up Northfield Parkway.
Northfield Parkway is almost like a railroad track.
Good point. Yeah, it's beautiful. So, you know, that's just one idea, is to leave it there, and, you know, that's all we've talked about so far.
But I think it's an excellent point that, you know, when we talk about the nodes, a lot of the nodes are down, down here or on the west side, and we don't want to lose sight of how important the east side and the northeast side, and even the southeast corner. You know, you want to, you want to make sure that those residents can, can get up to the trail and pathway that may run along Big Beaver. But, you know, the thing that I hear is, you know, going into the neighborhoods or whatever, and I, I think we need to be cautious in that area, because I was talking to Councilman Baker yesterday, I think, and I understand completely when you, when you are against bringing traffic from outside into your neighborhood. And I think if you get these pathways close to neighborhoods, people will find their own way to the path. You don't have to necessarily take the path into the, into the neighborhood, I don't think. If you live in a neighborhood, I think if you get it close, if it's going to be on Beach Road, or if it's going to be on John or whatever, or to a park, those people can get to the park, you know? We don't need to invade their, their space, so to speak. So I think if we, you know, give our ideas to staff, would be, the way I think it would work good, is to give ideas to staff and maybe let them sort it out, and rather than pay somebody $220,000, I think all staff needs to do is really tweak this, this plan here a little bit. There's so much good information in there, and it's not just a good trails and pathways master plan, it really talks about traffic in the whole city and movement. I think it's a great document. Mayor Protem Horrigan?
You know, we went through, first of all, I agree, absolutely. And we went, we went through this process when we were allocating last time, because we were trying to get a matching grant as well to do the connection, which drove a lot of demands that might have been met the demand of the grant maker, but missed the mark with our own residents. So I think what we're talking about is, is bringing it back here, and let's just own what we need to own in our city, and not get tangled up in that process. Now, the good part about that is we did get solid feedback from residents. There was essentially a charrette at the community center with a lot of good input, sticky notes on, Kurt, weren't there three plans? And I guess I want to say out loud that we, we recognize we've had that input, and I'm certain that would be factored in as well, in the thinking and the studying, so that that process wasn't for naught, I don't think, and it helps direct us. Let's bring it back here and own it, and make it right for us.
I think if, you know, if you read, if you read the master plan, it talks exactly about that, that the first stage should be taking care of the city. Okay? Step two and stage three should be then connecting to the outside paths, whether you're going up to the Clinton River, or you're going to try and attach to the metro. But it says, take care of your city first, and then branch out. But we were restricted with the grant. The only way we could get the grant is if we connected with Clinton River, so, you know, that's old news. Councilman Henderson?
Mayor Protem Horrigan kind of hit the nail on the head for me in that, with the grant application, you know, they required us to make it X width, X quality, X, you know, there were a lot of stipulations. And, you know, we don't have to have the gold standard of all trails through Troy. I mean, I think you can make connectivity with maybe narrower trails, different qualities of surface, and instead of spending a million dollars for just a, you know, maybe a three-quarter of a mile turn through where we have now, you know, if we can spread that money a little bit better by maybe not making as elaborate a situation, I get the swamp and all that other stuff you have to deal with, but you can stretch that. So a million dollars goes, you know, maybe two miles. So if we can keep those, those things in mind as well, that, you know, I think that'll be helpful, try to get this thing done.
Or at least a mile and a quarter.
Mile and a quarter. And I-75, can I ask about that? You brought that up. Is there a way to put a trail along I-75? Because that seems to be our railroad. You know, I mean...
Bill, you want to put a trail along I-75? I had to talk to that guy.
Well, can it be done? I mean, is it, is it...
I mean, I, I...
I-275 has their whole metro trail along I-275, and I mean, so I know they allow them in some respects, but I'm sure there's other issues.
All the trees have been eliminated.
You could get Big Beaver to 18 mile just overnight, and have offshoots at Waddles.
Yeah, there's a, I think, a large segment of the population that wouldn't desire to ride on a pathway alongside I-75.
I think you'd be surprised, though, Bill. I mean, if it connected to other places.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking along the 275, I mean, you don't see a lot of people on that path. I mean, it's just...
If I actually rode a bicycle and could get from 18 mile to 16 mile, I would do that. That's not going to happen. So I got a question.
We're going to mark your words.
That would make sense to run a path off 75 if that connects to somewhere in our city. But I would want any early money allocated towards finishing this project we have, and then moving out from there. I mean, I kind of don't like the idea of starting in a different area than trying to connect, just the, only because, you know, having forbid the economy went in the toilet a couple of years, we had, you know, we'd have a couple paths that didn't connect. So I'd rather, you know, branch out from what we have going and move from there.
I do have a question, just to clarify. So if we're coming under budget on this first leg that we did here, we're talking about the connectivity to the Historic Village now?
Correct.
Using this year's budget money? And then, okay.
Yes. Yeah, just because we're coming under budget, just try to connect it to the Historic Village with this project, and then money that we allocate for the next connection would be separate.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, could I just qualify that?
Yeah.
Project's not done yet?
Right.
So I want to say while we're projecting on our budget, let, you know, that's the goal, is to be on a budget and then take it to the Historical Museum, if that's what your desire is. It just sounds like it is.
Understood. Okay.
That eliminates the pathway to nowhere.
It accomplishes a couple of things, and I, I know there are a lot of events at the Historic Village that there's not enough parking there, and I think it would be a great way, you could park, you could park at Zion Church and use the path and get there very safely. And I think, quite honestly, I think a lot of folks might do that. But it just seems to me, if you're going to get that close to a jewel that you have in the city, that you ought to connect to it, you know? Then maybe staff can come back to us with a couple of options, whether do you branch off from there? Or you, or do you go down Big Beaver and connect to Bowlin Park, and go up Northfield Parkway to Butterfly or Park, or somewhere up in that way, as the next leg?
So, just one last point, you, just to dovetail off something you had said, you know, most of our neighborhoods have, I don't want to say most, because I don't want to insult anybody that doesn't have sidewalks, but most of the, most of the subdivisions have sidewalks, so they can get to an hour perimeter walkway. So, you know, we can be more creative to get to the areas that maybe don't get as much love as the Big Beaver Corridor does.
There are some of the best parks on the east side of the city, and, you know, if you connect those parks together, and then find a way to get them to Waddles Road and connect to the Civic Center site, to me, it doesn't seem that difficult.
You know, when you travel to other cities and you see through their existing connectivity, the directional pathways, you know, painted in the roadway, right now, we do have signs in neighborhoods that say "pathway," but it doesn't remind the motorists that they're sharing the road or that area. And all the new trends that are going on might lend itself really well to some of our paths that are already existing. You can see, like, when you're in the DC area, there's people, cars, buses, segways, bikes, in huge congested areas, and it's all moving because everything is kind of clearly labeled. So we know, we know how to do this, I think.
Yeah, I think, I think that's an excellent point. I think we do know how to do this, and I know, I know Kurt shares a strong passion for trails and pathways also, and I think if you just take what we have here and let, let staff tweak it, tweak it a little bit, and if we have consensus to follow the recommendation from staff at 750, I think we're good to go, if there's consensus.
Yeah, this will ensure that we have enough money in case, you know, all the ducks fall and rove this summer or fall, and we get this, this one done early, then we have enough money to continue. And that'd be great.
I just, just one other comment, if I could. When we were looking at the budget numbers Monday night, you know, we're talking about, you know, our fund, fund balance going down to around 20% in three years, but as, as staff indicated, we always budget very conservatively, and we generally come in maybe 2% to 3% above that. I just, I would just like to see if there's some way that we could let staff know that trails and pathways are a priority, and that if we have extra funds available at, you know, in January or February that we see are, you know, are not going to be used in that budgeting period, I would see if there's consensus to encourage staff to take some of, some of that funding, and trails and pathways would be a priority with that money.
I, obviously, there's a lot of variables there, and nothing's set in stone, but I think the concept of that is a good concept, if it's a priority for us and we are working from a plan.
Yeah. I don't want it to be a policy, you know, but I think if staff understands that it in priorities, it's up there pretty high.
I think the only question mark I would have is, you know, how much, how much is that? I think the only question mark I would have is, you know, how much is that, you know, three million dollar surplus? We're gonna spend three million bucks all of a sudden on a charrette? So, I mean--
Not to the discretion of--
That would be a far beyond.
Far beyond anyways.
It just gives us direction to know that that's what we need to be working on, first and foremost, with some kind of proposal, like you all would put on.
So, speaking of priorities, our priorities follow our strategies.
Right.
We had this as a strategy and it was tailored towards the charrette system and the consultant. Are we also asking that the strategy get modified and then come back to the table, whether it's Monday or on the ACE, to reflect the new budget priorities?
That's a good point. It's a great idea. I think it's a great idea. Yes, sir.
Mayor, Council, since I was the one in the group that brought up the idea of the strategy, it wasn't so much that we had to do that process that we had done for $220,000. It was, it seemed like we were hitting a spot where we stopped.
Right.
So, I don't think revising that strategy would be out of line with our group when we developed this, because we all thought this was a strategy of the city and we wanted to keep going somehow, some way.
Good point. I was sharing some of that frustration myself, that I thought it was dying of slow death, so to speak, and it's great to hear that it's not. And I think that was the point that you're trying to make. Councilman Henderson.
Yeah, sometimes if you want to spark good conversations, throw a big number out there.
I think that was a great discussion. Anything else? The staff, are you okay with--
I think we have good direction.
Thank you.
No, sir.
No, no, nope. Wait, you'll have time for a public comment. Just hang with us for a little bit.
I know there was another issue that was going to be discussed this evening.
Yeah. Okay. Laura and Campbell's gonna give this presentation.
Mark, did you--
I'm just gonna start with an introduction, just to say, you know, Monday night, we talked about the $450,000 for the renovation of the Niles Barnard House. And I'm just gonna give sort of a quick summary of what the conditions are in the sense that the city owns the historic village and the buildings on that site. And in an operating agreement we have with the Troy Historical Society, we will maintain those buildings and the grounds while the Historical Society will run the programming and do sort of janitorial maintenance as part of that. And so, there's this bifurcation of roles where we're responsible for the grounds and buildings while they do the programming and maintenance.
Thank you, Mark. And before I flip the slide then, I want to be very clear that while I work now for the Troy Historical Society, this is not a request for $450,000 to come to the Historical Society. Rather, it is our support and encouragement for the city of Troy to invest $450,000 to restore the building that is in the village that it owns. Council, you received a memo from the city attorney in the last 24 hours that gives a history of the ownership, transfer of ownership of the building, which the city accepted through a gift agreement with Harriet Barnard in 2005. The Troy Historical Society was not a part of that agreement, but you accepted ownership of that building and agreed that it would remain open to the public in a manner similar to the other buildings in the village. Additionally, that memo outlines that the Troy Historic Village and the Niles Barnard House on that property are part of a locally designated historic district, and therefore they are governed under Chapter 13 of your ordinance. Demolition by neglect violates your ordinance and the Michigan Historic Preservation Act. There has been a question about the financial investment to date in the property. The city of Troy did invest $96,500, which was taken from a capital fund back in the early 2000s that had been established to expand the village. That money was applied to purchase one of two parcels of land to expand the village by full acre. And since the building was relocated to the village in 2010, you have supported that village through your annual appropriation for core costs. Additionally, the question was, has the Troy Historical Society done any fundraising? And the answer is yes. We have spent over $837,000 since 2005 to complete the purchase of those two parcels of land, to pay for architectural fees, for a new site plan, and the construction drawings that moved the village, all of the relocation costs, including foundation, electrical service, et cetera. The next question is how would we use that building? What is wonderful about the Niles Barnard House is that it provides 1,700 square feet of programmable space, flexible space, that we can use for a variety of purposes, catered events, including meetings, receptions, private parties, wedding receptions. Right now, about 30% of our wedding clients who get married in either the church or on the village green ask about having a reception in the village. And unless they have an outdoor reception in the summer, we can't satisfy their needs. You see here a floor plan that was done when we did a space allocation study showing the building set up for a seated event. We can also set it up with high tops, like for a cocktail type reception, or standing reception, or we can set it up for lecture or classroom service. So, that is a much expanded use of the building. We can also infuse it and will infuse it with new education and enrichment programs, as well as having the building open as one of the other buildings in the village where people can tour through like they would any building. The interpretation in the building will be limited to the walls. We want to keep the floor space open for all of those events. Operational sustainability is always also a question. Once you expend money for a capital improvement, how are you gonna support that with staff? In 2016, the Troy Historical Society was one of five organizations in the state of Michigan, one of 37 in the nation, to receive a grant from the National Endowment for the Humanities, it's called the Access Grant. It's a challenge grant whereby the Historical Society raises $50,000 in new donations within a two-year period that is matched dollar for dollar by the National Endowment for the Humanities. Those funds are put in a restricted bank account totaling $100,000 by June of next year, of 2018. And then, those funds can be expended over the next three years to pay for staff, supplies, and marketing to increase our long-term fiscal sustainability. That money will help provide the financial wherewithal to infuse the Niles Barnard House with programming and facilities rentals, as outlined in our grant. We currently have already $30,000 raised, so we have, we will have in June, a total of $60,000 in the bank. We also, as required by that grant, have to establish a framework for a permanent endowment fund that would support operations of the village. And that has been a long-term request of you to make the village more sustainable. So, what we're looking at from our business plan is net profitability of the Niles Barnard House over 12 years, depending on whether low usage, outlined in blue, or more aggressive usage of the building, outlined in orange, ranging from $11,500 to $400 a year to start, up to, with high usage, close to $46,000 a year, 12 years out. That money will make operations of the Niles Barnard House certainly sustainable and generate additional revenue to enhance the long-term sustainability of the entire Troy Historic Village.
Thank you. Laura, any questions for the man? I think that answered a lot of questions, especially for me.
You're welcome.
Councilman Henderson. Lorraine was kind enough to entertain Ethan Baker and myself over there the other day. We stopped in because until you really get kind of a grasp of what is the building, it's tough to make a decision. So, as I left there, I joked with Councilman Baker, I'd offer at least a couple hundred thousand less on that house if I were showing it as a, it's a wreck. So, and, you know, if we, to her point, I mean, if we got hooked into getting that thing on our property, then we have an obligation to do something with it. So, I understand that more now than I did Monday. I guess some of the questions I am gonna have about it are, you know, the cost, is it $450,000 to rehab it and bring it back to, you know, usable condition? And I think that's something that, I know Brian and I have talked a little bit about that, since it's, it'll probably put out the bid, is that correct? And, you know, so we can try to develop a better scope of, you know, kind of where that goes. The other question I have, though, further to that, is the projections that we're looking at here, net profitability of that, of that piece of property or that building on our property, you know, my goal has always been, and I'm not gonna not talk about this year, but to try to reduce the $100,000 that we give to the historic village every year to zero eventually, we'd like to, you know, get them off the payroll. And that's difficult, I understand, and this will be some assistance to that end. But, you know, what assurances do we have? Let's just presume it's on the high side and they can build profitability of $45,000. Next year, are we gonna be able to look at some books and say, okay, maybe we can chunk down the $100,000 to 80 or 70 or whatever that number is? So, I just want to make sure that that's still on everybody's radar, that we're not leaving that, you know, status quo out there and putting improvements in to help bolster their profitability and still keeping them on the payroll.
Any other comments? Mayor Protem Howard.
You're right. Unless you visit that building and understand its context, sometimes you can't see the potential. And I do think, you know, you read this article in the paper, you're gonna say, what are they talking about? And the historical preservation of this is amazing, and the donation to the city, I think, by that family was amazing, and the agreements that were made. The potential, you know, I kind of experienced at Western Michigan University this past fall. It was a president's house, it's a historical building on that campus that was the location for my daughter's rehearsal dinner. She was married in Kalamazoo and her reception was on campus there. It was a rehearsal dinner, it was where they got ready, the bride and bridesmaids spent the night there, the first look and the first pictures were there the next day. And the reputational element of this building to that area is tremendous. And I think when we look at this investment, it's not just, oh, we're gonna put a new roof and some windows on a house. This is an optics and a reputational piece that takes what is a gem and, you know, adds another diamond to it, if you will. It just, if you can have the vision for that and its potential, we do do weddings on the village, we do events there, this has that potential. And that's what makes me pause and say, oh, I get it. I get what this capital investment could do. I think if I hadn't just experienced that as much as I did in September and what a vital piece that is on that campus, you know, that was just one of that. There are special events there throughout the year that are catered, and its historical relevance is very treasured by the people in that community. So, I think that's what we're looking at helping to create, and we have the historical team, I call them, that is keeping everything else afoot and afloat. They can't do this on top of that, of what they're doing to just keep the village going. It's impossible to ask for it to come through some sort of donation process at this point. And it just makes me comfortable with saying this is a viable investment. And the $450,000, maybe, maybe once it goes out for bids and whatnot, it, you know, that's the placeholder number. When you think about the potential, it makes a lot of sense to me.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson.
Lorraine, well, knows that I'm a huge supporter of the historic village, although I did, when I saw the first, the first time I saw the $450,000 figure, it made me pause about, whoa. I thought more about it after Monday night, and it is a historic home, and it's held to different standards in terms of constructions. And so, when I was driving home Monday night pondering this, as I'm trying to drift off to sleep, it started to come together. Well, if this were a home in one of our subdivisions, although we probably wouldn't get to the state, it might cost half as much or a quarter as much. But the techniques that need to be used and that are very much specified by statute to maintain, it does get pricey. I mean, we were looking at, a few months ago, the building that we once owned off of, was it off of Crooks?
Yeah.
Off of Crooks. We listed it as historic property, and part of the reason that we did it is, well, one, it had changed so much over time, but to maintain it with those standards was extremely costly and you really couldn't maintain it. So, I'm hoping the bids come in under $450,000, but it probably does, I'm prepared to have to spend that much to make it viable.
Thank you. Councilman Baker.
I, you know, I asked a lot of questions Monday night, because this was, I know, of course, new to the house, but the concepts and some of the legal aspects of it regarding the gift agreement were new to me. So, I did get a good memo from the city attorney's office and reviewed everything and spoke with Lorraine, with Councilman Henderson, like you said, and it, I guess, a follow-up question, I think I know the answer to. Obviously, the Barnard family is supportive of this concept for use of the property, and it doesn't conflict with the gift agreement, how it gets used as long as there's public tours, everything's okay with that. But, you know, maybe, I just want to say thank you, Lorraine, for being so thorough with what you've given us tonight and with yesterday's meeting at the house. I wish I actually would have taken, I'm sure you have pictures, but I took pictures in my mind of what it was, and, I mean, it actually looks much better on the outside than it does on the inside. So, I mean, imagine what it was like on the inside. And to think that, you know, Troy will have another venue that's got a certain amount of historical value and, you know, class in a sense would be great, especially in that spot in the center of our city that is a gem, and hopefully can be utilized on a broader scale, and maybe a retreat in a couple of years, we could do there or something like that.
Councilman Pennington.
So, I just have one question, and I'm sure this is the case, since it was moved 12, 13 years ago, the house has been shuttered, it hasn't been open for tours?
It cannot be open for tours. We did enough repair with volunteers, including community service volunteers, to provide a stairway, to put in some construction lighting, and to make it safe so that if we had a potential donor come in, we had kind of provisional access from this, granted by the city, that it was safe. So, the only people who really go into the building and check it routinely are my staff and a couple of volunteers who do that kind of work, and an occasional donor that we might, you know, potential donor or guest, like a city council person that wants to go in. Other than that, there's absolutely no public access for programming.
So, that was the problem. So, it was donated to us, you know, '05, and then the city went, you know, the nation went into recession, so there was no money to, you know, complete the project and get it up to speed. So, now, here we are 12, 13 years later, and now we have to deal with a higher number than we like, but it's because of that fact. So, yeah, I know my problem with it, I mean, you probably had HVAC units that aren't there.
Why you're willing--
Yeah, we would hope, we would hope that the number would be less, but, you know, who knows? It may be that amount, and you have to, at this point, move forward and get up to speed while, again, while the economy is good.
Very good. I think there's consensus from what I've heard around the table is to add this to the budget, and I appreciate the documentation from the city attorney's office yesterday that all of the points that were made by council are excellent points. I know-- And I appreciate the documentation from the city attorney's office yesterday that all of the points that were made by council are excellent points. I know this has been a vision of the Historical Society and Lorraine since day one to use this as a revenue generator for the village. So I know it's been a vision forever, but, you know, the city does have an obligation. And I think that's the overriding factor of, that we have an obligation and we should move up to our obligations. So I think there's consensus and, thank you, Lorraine.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes.
May I just summarize what I heard?
Okay.
I've had too much of meetings.
Yes.
In terms of changes that Mr. Darling's been so eager to make, that we will be putting in $750,000 for Trails and Pathways for the next three years, and that's the only change. And eliminating the $220,000 study.
And maybe tweaking the strategies, bringing that back.
Yeah.
And little typos and errors, just send them your way if you want to.
I'll send them to Maggie.
Yeah.
You don't even have to see Steve.
I figured you didn't want to see. Make it 30, 31, or 20, 31.
I've sent, I've sent three, so.
Or not.
You've read every character I know.
The green tabs are typewriters.
There's actually one page that just kind of ends.
Yes, I found that one.
Was it Trails and Pathways?
You know, one discussion that is in here, you know, anybody watching us, watching us spend, you know, a little bit of time Monday night and tonight, we did get a binder that is detailed that, you know, we all went through. And I guess I don't want to say that out loud in public, but that's the case. And very thankful to staff for the work that went into us. And just an overall vision that you capture in the narrative, but I think needs to be said out loud is, you know, we're protecting our AAA bond rating. This is a fiscally responsible, best practice, three-year, five-year outlook that mimics the accelerated budget practice of our county. And so the conversation we're having at this table is that, are these nits and nats and initiatives aside from all of that? And I think we can, it looks like we can walk away feeling assured. Our mortgage rate is set properly and fairly for our taxpayers. It sustains us over the next few years while protecting our AAA bond rating. I just wanted, you know, the people that preceded us some years ago set us up so well and make our job so easy now. And we're still doing that, right? We're still, we're continuing that legacy. Thank you.
Great. I know it's not part of the, in the budget, the physical part about it, but staff will be taking a look at, bringing together a tweak to the plan and bring that back to council, maybe with a couple or three options, maybe for some further discussion on where we go from here. I just want to indicate again that the budget is available for review at the city clerk's office, the Troy Public Library, and on the city's website, which is www.troymi.gov/budget. And there will be a public hearing at the next council meeting. No, no public hearing?
May.
May, may. Yeah, next. Whatever it's scheduled. And at that time, we will vote on adopting the budget or not. So having said that, the next portion of our session is public comment. So this is an opportunity to speak to the council. This is not a question and answer session. It's just an opportunity to give comment to city council. So, sir, I'll call on you first.
Yeah.
Please limit to about three minutes, if you could. I appreciate it. And come up to the microphone here.
Oh, is that how I do that? Can't just sit and say.
We are recording. We are recording. So if you could just use this.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. My name's Larry Chapelli. I know quite a few people are Brian, especially he's a really nice guy. And I don't know any council here, but I was invited by somebody and I thank you for being here tonight. I guess I had quite a few questions. And some of the things on the trail, trail allocation, $750,000, does that include maintenance or does that include just the construction? It seems like you'd be concerned about maintenance on all your pathways, sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera, because, you know, frankly, some of them are mess.
As I indicated, this is not a question and answer.
Okay.
If you just want to give us your comments, maybe we can give you a little comment.
Sure. I would think the allocation, which I don't know, would be toward maintenance as well. And the second one was his comment about the freeway path. Path is a great idea. The only thing is, you probably would want to clear the adjacent brush away too, because that's a mess before you do that. But I think that's an excellent idea. And going on, what constitutes a historical site is my question, but I guess this is not a question and answer thing. I would think, I would think $450,000 without due respect to historical site is a lot of money. And for, to put that in a budget, you know, money could be spent on a lot of other things. And I don't think $450,000, and I know a lot about construction, it's quite a big number. And one of the main reasons I came here tonight is because I want, you know, when everybody pulls off I-75, they see a little brown sign and it says Sylvan Glen Park. And I think if everybody notices, I don't know, I think some money on the budget that the city council should go toward restoring that lake. Now, I was there with my girlfriend's grandson the other day, and I used to live right next to it. It used to be a beautiful area. And I went there and quite, quite frankly, it's pretty deplorable. You think that a major park with a sign that's directing 200,000 cars a day toward that thing, it should, it should be repaired. And some of the money that we're allocating for all this stuff, I would think that as a city, they would address that. The site is murky. It's pretty bad. If somebody were to walk there, it could be, it could be taken care of really well. That's kind of the reason why I was here today, because I, I took a look at that. It just looks really bad. And I would think that, that that should be addressed in a council meeting, especially a landmark, a beautiful site that could be fixed up really nice. It would take nothing much. And what, I guess I just had a lot of questions, but I think that's about it. Thanks a lot for having me here and I appreciate it. And nice to meet everybody. And I wish I was at the council. I could, it would be a really fun thing to do.
You can be.
Yes, sir. Please come forward. If you could just give us your name, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Fred Phillips. Somebody who may recall from a previous discussion, I'm involved with the Clinton River Trail. I was very encouraged to hear the discussion tonight about trails and pathways. But at the same time, I wanted to just kind of nudge the city a little more and remind you how far behind the city of Troy is. I spent this morning at Oakland County offices, meeting with trails people from around the county, listening to Novi's presentation where, back in 2008, the city of Troy had very significant citizen participation along with the professionals that did the plan that you were looking at. When the city, the city of Troy decided to withhold that plan from council and not do anything and to withdraw the two and a quarter million dollars they had in the capital improvement plan for trails, the city of Novi decided to move ahead. And they've developed a six-phase approach. It's not just one step. But they were talking about the next phase where they are committing $8.4 million for their trail system, which is a comprehensive system throughout the city. They've already addressed the issues that have caused Troy problems. The question of a trail in front of someone's house. They have a path, a trail, in front of people's homes. People opposed it. Those same people now are champions for it because once it's there, they use it, they find out what the value is. City of Southfield, their investment is phenomenal in trails, pathways, bike routes. Even the city of Pontiac has just completed a complete streets plan and is moving ahead. So as encouraged as I am with Troy's commitment tonight, I just want to remind you, these other communities are moving ahead even faster. One thing that I almost wanted to jump up and respond to is the question of the I-75 pathway. Back in 2008, the citizen group that was involved looked at that, and that looked like a real sensible approach. What's changed since then is MDOT has gone ahead with the project to widen I-75. And that widening will basically consume the right of way that would have been available for a pathway. It wouldn't have been like I-275. I-275 pathway is some 60 feet removed from the edge of the roadway. It would have only been about 20 feet. Now it would be less than five. So I'm not sure, unless MDOT is willing to make some other compromises, there's probably no sensibility in that. The last thing I was going to mention, last two things. Oakland County has tremendous resources available for the design of trails and pathways. That's something we've already paid for with our tax dollars. And so it certainly is possible for Troy to approach the county and see if they can get some help that might supplement some of the activities that that $220,000 consulting grant might have, might have addressed. The last thing in this group that I met with this morning at the county, there happened to be someone there who works for the road commission but is a resident of Troy. And in talking about tonight's meeting and in talking about the sessions that we had back when we were considering the grant possibilities, he pointed out to me that Troy has a real problem because he's interested in this trail stuff, never heard about it. And I tried to explain all the different avenues that I knew of Troy staff that have tried to get the word out. But there is a definite need for citizens to get the message somehow. It may not be the kind of thing that you can do in a two-week period, trying to get them to come to a specific meeting. But over time, that's probably the key element in that consulting contract that would have been of value, was to reengage the citizens. Because a lot of the citizens that were involved back in 2008 have gone away. There's a few in the group that are still around. A lot of them have moved to other places. They've retired or whatever and they're not, not here. Or they just lost interest. They gave up on it. So I'm excited. I'm glad to hear you supported the trails. I'm glad to hear you got it in the budget. I just want you to realize, you're coming from behind. You got to push hard. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always nice, nice to hear from you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Steve Madolsky, live at 6504 Crab Apple. I think there's two trains of thought here. Worked with Kurt a couple of years ago when we went to the city and we went to the city hall and the civic center and went through that whole process, similar to what that was right there. And at that time, it was a Clinton River connector. And that Clinton River connector was going to do a couple of things to my property. Okay? It was going to put 11-foot walkway between Jim's house and my house sidewalk today that we both put split rail fences on a couple of years ago. And then it was going to tear down a bunch of trees behind our house, which Troy is, I think, a firm believer in nature. Okay? So why we were going to tear down a bunch of trees, I don't know. We were then going to put asphalt walkway through the park, firefighters. Couldn't understand that when we already had existing pass-through. So I think the city spoke, that the residents spoke, which was great because I spoke, my wife spoke, many of us spoke, and that was turned out. So thank you for that opportunity to let us speak. That was very important to us. Because we moved here 20 years ago to be in this city because of the trees, the nature, the safety. Everything that that house has brought, me and my family, has been demonstrated and has been fulfilled. That, you know, in all defense to your opinions, bringing the Clinton River Trail through with cement and asphalt and wood and tearing down trees is not what I'd like to see. Now, Mayor, I am all in for what you had to say. You said, you're right. We live in a far northwest corner of Troy. We've got firefighters parked there. We've got trails. I see people every day coming down the trails next to my house, and I enjoy that. I've never had one problem with anybody. They've got a path into the park. They've got a path anywhere they want to go. There are sidewalks, kids, whatever. But it is not professional bikers. It is not people who ride Make-A-Wish 300 miles in three days. It is people with baby carriages. It is people, little kids. It's, it's just nice traffic into the park and out of the park. Okay? And you said connect nodes. Okay? Connect things together, but don't rip everything down and put a bunch of cement and asphalt and brick and other stuff. That I don't think this is what this city's all about, you know? But connecting other, we're already connected. We're connected, that whole northwest corridor is connected to firefighters. Now, if we somehow got to connect firefighters other places, I'm all for that. But let's, you know, please ask the residents, you know? I'm more willing to give you my opinion. Okay? And I think you've heard my opinion. Okay? I want to be part of it. I don't want just a bunch of asphalt and cement and, again, thrown behind my yard. And Kurt and, and I'm, Brian, I've talked to you guys and you guys were wonderful and you engaged us. Okay? And, and thank God, you know, we, we had a successful ending. But I'm all for connectors. I'm all, I'm an outdoors guy. I love outdoors. Our windows are always open. My wife and I always walk into dog, bikes, whatever. That's why we love this city. Okay? I go down to Dallas. I hate Dallas. Glass, cement, steel, that's not for us. Troy is green, flowers, nature. That's what this city is. So I hope, Mayor, that you do what you said you're going to do and provide the connectors. Make it subtle. Make it inclusive of the community. Make it so it's natural. And I know, we're never going to be that city like Rochester. I ran a marathon a couple of years ago. And yeah, I go up to Clinton River and I run down that trail. They had railroad, I mean, they got facilities. They got infrastructure. We don't. We just got to accept that. We don't. And we just got to take an alternative plan. Okay? Something that's appealing to the residents. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak this evening?
Oh, one I could, can I get that plan or no? Thank you.
Yeah, it's your text, though.
Great. It's always, it's always good to hear from, from residents. And we will take those comments and decipher them and they'll go, they'll go to staff when they're putting all these great ideas together. So any other comments from council before we wrap this up this evening? Another great job putting the budget together. It makes it a lot, a lot easier for us and having the study sessions. It was a good time. Thank you. We're adjourned.